Hello everyone, we're going to start the second session shortly. Please come back to your seats and join us. Thank you for your patience. This is the second session, which is themed around whether Taiwan would become the next Ukraine. We welcome a panelists from both Japan and China. Let me introduce the three or rather four panelists who will be speaking during this session. From China, Center for International Security and Strategy Tsinghua University Senior Fellow, Mr. Zhou Bo. Three panelists from Japan. Former Japanese Ambassador to China Ambassador Yuji Miyamoto. Former Chief of Staff Japan Self-Defense Forces, Mr. Toshikazu Kawano. And last but not least, Mr. Yoji Koda Admiral of the Self-Defense Force. And we also invite the panelists for the first session to turn their videos on as well to join in the discussion. Yasushi Kudo will moderate the session. Thank you for joining us. Now, this theme, in February, Genm NPO organized a session between China, the United States, Japan, and Korea gathering experts about the Taiwan issue. And I have invited one of the panelists to act as a moderator. The panelists then to act as a moderator of this session. This conference, my organization hosted in February was a significant one. Experts on diplomacy and social and security were asked to fill out a questionnaire, 200 of them, about Taiwanese contingencies and any possible eruption of conflicts due to spontaneous accidents during in the Taiwan Straits. And those were the main leading answers to that question, particularly among the US experts. The conflict in Taiwanese, conflicts in Taiwanese Strait was listed as the largest risk for 2022. In that debate, I came out with a sentiment that there is an erosion of confidence, trust between US and China. There is extensive distrust, in other words. In other words, the crisis management mechanism which worked in the past and agreed upon between the two countries no longer is functioning. So in this region, there has to be expeditious efforts to build a crisis management mechanism. That was a consensus coming out of that conference. But on that day, very day, very day Putin invaded Ukraine. So there are similarities and differences between the Ukrainian situation crisis and the Taiwanese possible contingencies. The difference is very clear. The difference, this distinction is that on the diplomacy front, China's contention is that Taiwan is part of China. Chinese territory is therefore a domestic issue, therefore different, separate from Ukraine. In the meantime, China has been engaging in military buildup and undermine the one country, two system rule in Hong Kong. And therefore, there are less, there are not much prospects of a peaceful unification. And they are, there is an apprehension that China could possibly invade Taiwan. That is the situation as of today. So, one question to the three panelists who are present today, whether Taiwan will become the next Ukraine? At least the world and within domestic Taiwan as well, they are, there is a pervasive mood. And Ambassador Miyamoto, what is your answer? Once again, Mr. Miyamoto is the former Japanese Ambassador to China, expert on this issue. Good evening, good morning, and good day to everyone. Exercising my privilege at this time, I would like to speak in Japanese, which is my, which is the best language for me. And to be able to participate in such a, among a prestigious roster of panelists is an honor as well. You're all at the center of the world, addressing global issues, resolving to find answers and giving thought to peace in the world. And I would like to, I would like to express my respect and appreciation to all of you. Now, there are three questions from Mr. Kudo, about which I am tasked to answer. Let me give a statement to cover most of them. There are similarities between Taiwan and the Russian invasion of Ukraine, whether the Ukrainian, the Ukrainian situation will trigger a contingency in Taiwan. Now, the Ukrainian issue, as discussed during the previous session, will have, will have major repercussions in the future, in the future of the world. So as a superpower, China, China is looking at the situation intently and learning seriously from its relations with Russia. So China is diligent about monitoring the Ukrainian situation, how not to fail, what efforts to expand, to seek lessons from the Ukrainian crisis. But in my mind, there are no parallels between Ukraine and Taiwan. Very clear distinction, therefore, the Ukrainian crisis will not directly trigger a Taiwan, that contingency in Taiwan. At what, at what point will China use force to unify Taiwan? That is dependent on the domestic politics of China, in my, in my mind. So Putin's, President Putin's attend, whether or not it will succeed, what to do with Taiwan and when would be done under a different time schedule with different factors to consider. Of course, the Russian lesson in Ukraine would be contemplated by China. And in the event that China will seek to, is forced to unify Taiwan by force, China will be looking back at this situation. But the timetable, the timeframe would be dictated by China at their own pace. In Japanese, there is a word sontaku, which means to guess or to presume other people's thoughts. This is common, commonly done in China as well. In other words, presuming what are the intentions of President Xi. Lot depends on his decisions, his will. During this past fall, the 20th Congress of the Chinese Communist Party was held. The overarching goal of that Congress was to strengthen the Xi regime to ensure that Xi is elected for the third time. The stability of the Xi administration is dependent on the economy. So the Russian issue, the Ukraine issue, how that, those will impact China from a domestic standpoint. In other words, how much effect it will have on the Chinese economy and how the Chinese public would perceive the Ukrainian crisis and determine to evaluate and evaluate how President Xi would handle that matter as well. Now, China has established a special relationship with Russia. Ever since President Xi came into power, this relationship has strengthened, exceeding a normal alliance. It's a special, it has been termed as defined as a special relationship. How would that relationship, how would Ukrainian crisis affect that relationship? Whether that decision to establish a special relationship with Russia was wise or not may be a subject of controversy, debate in China. What is most important in China? Right now, their, their economy is doing fairly well, but overall entering difficult times. On top of that, there are tensions with the US, that too has repercussions. And layered with the Ukrainian crisis. In other words, China constantly has both external and internal challenges. In that context, in that context, there has to be, I cannot see a reason for resolving the Taiwanese issue for China. In other words, it doesn't register with me to find parallels between Ukraine and Taiwan. There is no, that logic doesn't sit well with me. When will China, at what point will China exercise force against Taiwan? There has to be a cause, a grand design or cause dai yu fen in China, which means the same. There has to be a great overarching cause to use force against Taiwan such that it is compelling to anyone. That is only when that cause is found will China exercise, use force against Taiwan. Meaning, the administration has to persuade the Chinese public first. Even if aggression is justified in terms of national security, without an overarching cause, a grand cause, the administration is unable to mobilize the military. Do I have more time or should I? No, I think, I think that's a good point to pause at this, I think. So what shall I do with the second question, whether China would exercise or invade Taiwan? Do you think it's possible? As I mentioned, you don't think so, right? Unless there is a cause, a grand cause, I don't think so. What is the risk? Once the, once President Trump came into power, took office, the US, the US agreement with China has been vague about Taiwan. The issue of Taiwan has been left fuzzy between the two countries. That is why, that is why China, that, that is why China is taking the current position. There's a conflict of interest inherently from the very beginning. But with a play of words, through play of words, that issue had been fudged. So there is a gray zone, this was a gray zone issue with the Trump administration. The US has taken the issue and reframed it to their advantage, to its advantage. The US-Taiwan relations have been reframed to the advantage of the US, in my mind. On the diplomatic front, I believe that US is testing China's red line. Meaning, how far will China go in drawing their red line? And of course, China has to say no, but there's no point, there's no point for the foreign ministry official to reject that. But rather, China has been conducting military exercises in the Taiwanese Straits in close proximity to Taiwanese territory. And China, on the other hand, is testing US military red line. US and China are reciprocally testing their respective red lines. This is the risk. With the Biden administration, there's more caution diplomatically. So the Taiwanese issue is more stable compared to the Trump administration. But in my mind, the basic structure of both countries testing each other's red lines remain. How to manage the crisis, how to manage conflicts, is it possible? I do believe it's possible, but the major issue as it stands today and addressed by Mr. Kudo, between US and China and also to a certain extent, to a great extent, Japan and China, there is a significant erosion of confidence, trust. Without trust, even if there is dialogue, there is conversation, the level of confidence will affect the results of dialogue greatly. I believe that is, that is a critical issue, meaning it could create a vicious cycle. That is the context in which we find ourselves, that cycle must be stopped, confidence must be built. And the situation in Taiwan Straits must be contained. Otherwise, there'll be a significant risks in that area for both US and China. And as Mr. Admiral Kawano will address, Japan sees the Taiwan Straits as incendiary as well. I would like to defer to other experts beyond this, but crisis management must be expedited. And, and to do that, dialogue must be restored and strengthened by people on the ground diligently as well. Lastly, both US, the US and China and Japan as well should stop slinging mud at each other because there's no end to that. The, the common goal should be stabilize, stabilize the Taiwan Straits to ensure that this region enjoys peace and prosperity, which is beneficial to both the US and China and obviously to Japan. And what to do? Would bring us to diplomacy. There has to be an environment to allow diplomacy to achieve its conventional, fulfill its conventional role. What is happening now is an integration of domestic situation and diplomacy. So sophisticated form of diplomacy is tenable, untenable right, right now. I believe that is a major challenge as it stands today, despite that. Leaders, despite that, leaders of the world must attempt to engage in sophisticated diplomacy. Diplomacy is about compromise, subject to domestic backlash. The public in general are not appreciative of diplomacy because of that. I think, Dr. Zhou, this may be hard for you, but not to put you on the spot, but in China, public opinion plays a major role as well. President Xi doesn't have free rein, in other words, in China as well. Huge, there, there are huge constraints on public opinion as well. State leaders should understand that and to achieve a breakthrough. And the only good news in international relations is the personal level of trust between President Biden and President Xi. I think that is the only gift that the leaders can bring to the international community, Mr. Admiral Kawano.
So Chief of Staff is the top person of the Self-Defense Forces. Admiral Kawano, please take the floor, yes. Good evening, everyone. Also, whether this situation in Ukraine, is it going to be a trigger of the Taiwan contingency? One thing I would like to say is the Ukrainian situation is bringing about a big turning point to global security. One thing is to do with the response on the part of the United States. Back in 1991, when there was the Gulf War and Iraq invaded Kuwait, which was an independent country. And President Bush, Father Bush, thought that it shouldn't be left unresponded because otherwise this will disintegrate the order of the Cold War. So then President Bush brought together different countries to have the military invasion to kick out the Iraq from Kuwait. And about Ukraine, this time around, President Biden declared economic sanctions very early on. But this situation in Ukraine, Russia invading Ukraine, this is the same case in point as what happened with the Gulf War. But then the US response was completely the opposite one, not sending any troops to Ukraine. Why is it? It's because Russia is a big nuclear power. If the US sends troops to Ukraine and have a direct conflict with Russia, there is a possibility that it escalates to a nuclear war. And that's why the US has refrained from having such military intervention. And I think that is actually the truth. So the possibility of a nuclear war being taken into consideration and the US has decided not to have a military intervention, thinking of the possibility of a nuclear war. And the world has witnessed that. And then China is also a nuclear power. And then China is closely monitoring the situation and the phenomena, what is happening right now. That's why I would say that this could actually trigger a contingency in the Taiwan Strait. On the other hand, this time around, Russia has invaded Ukraine. But according to the reports, and I think those reports are quite accurate, the short term victory was what President Putin assumed in terms of conquering Ukraine. But then he, his assumption was proven wrong and President Putin is in a difficult position right now. And this is once again something that China is closely monitoring right now. So in the case of Ukraine, and there is a border shared between the two countries and what is happening, is happening right now. But then in the case of Taiwan, if China is to have a military aggression, China has to go crossing the Taiwan Strait. So this can be an even more difficult one. And China is looking at the situation in Ukraine and it is proving quite difficult. And this can work as a break on the possibility of China going to Taiwan. So these are the two things that's been presented by the Ukrainian situation. So what would be the judgment on the part of China? And I am trying to answer the second question, which is about potential China's aggression, military aggression to Taiwan. So to have, whether or not China would have a military aggression to Taiwan or not, putting aside that question, I would say that there is no option for China not to annex Taiwan. Because the moment China declares that way, then the regime of China would have no reason for its existence. Therefore, there is an option not to go to Taiwan, but there's no option not to deny that potential altogether. So in order to prevent China from going to Taiwan, we have to create a situation whereby China cannot go to Taiwan. So this Ukrainian situation, what it is presenting to us all is that for those leaders who consider this as a security problem to impose economic sanctions upon those leaders, that is actually an impossible thing to make them refrain from those aggressions by way of economic sanctions. Because a military aggression is considered to be a security issue for those leaders. In order to stop them from doing that, and this is a kind of very brutal reality, that what can stop such military aggression is actually a military response. That is their best response possible. And in that sense, also in order to prevent Taiwan contingency from happening, we would have to create a situation whereby China cannot go to Taiwan or we have to build a deterrence, in other words, between the US and Japan for China, for not contemplating on going to Taiwan. So, of course, diplomacy is very important. But in order to have a good functioning diplomacy, it's very important to have a military backup. And that is already proven in history. So that is all I have to say. So in other words, and I would like to go to my conclusion or proposal. Right now, the United States is pursuing a strategy of ambiguity. And as I said already, in order to prevent a nuclear war, the US has chosen not to have a military intervention. And that's been closely watched and witnessed by the entire world. But therefore, for the Taiwan Strait, the US is taking this ambiguity strategy. But now it's high time for the US to actually shift its strategy from uh one of ambiguity to something else with this situation that is taking place in Ukraine. Thank you very much. It's very clear. Thank you. I would like to ask you some questions later on.
Then to uh Mister Zhou Bo from China. And uh you are a very precious speaker from your, from China. So please, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Kudo, very much for inviting me. And it's very interesting for me to see so many people put the, the food in China's shoes. Think about how China is going to respond either to Ukraine or to Taiwan. Even I cannot say that I would speak off behalf of Beijing. So this is totally my personal assessment. I understand why you put China, Russia together because of our strategic partnership. I understand this. But before I talk about the the final question of whether Taiwan would become next to Ukraine, let me talk about the differences between China and Russia. First of all, there are two differences between China and Russia. One is a different attitude toward international order. Yes, both China and Russia talk about a multipolarity, but for different reasons. Why? Because China's attitude, well, the existing international order is a positive as Lawrence Anderson has kindly pointed out as well. And China actually has expressed time again that we are ready to preserve this order. Why? Because China is the largest beneficiary of the globalization, which is rooted in the international order with its rules and regime, which are largely uh built by the West, led by the United States. Therefore, China has a, has a millions of ties yeah with the West and including US that neither side wish to sever. But Russia, look at this world, where is kind of the victim group as uh over the dissolution of Soviet Union, therefore, they look at this world with resentment. The second difference between China and Russia is the views on spheres of influence. For example, what do I think about the Ukrainian war? I believe Ukrainian war is a clash between NATO's sphere of influence and Russia's sphere of influence. Many people talk about how bad Russia is, but very few people point out the truth, the fact that it is the five NATO expansion that actually and eventually backfired. But China has no interest in spheres of influence. I'm not trying to say this as rhetoric. Let me tell you why. Because, because even if China wants to have sphere of influence, China cannot. For example, maybe East Asia, it looks most like China's spheres of influence. But East Asia is not China's sphere of influence. Why? DPRK doesn't listen to China when it comes to nuclear issue and quite a few countries, American allies. And even in South Asia, there are a few countries that their priorities use with China. And then in the Indian Ocean, India definitely would be a not like China's influence getting too strong in, in the ocean. But now let me remind you one thing. Influence and spheres of influence are two different things. China doesn't want sphere of influence, but that does not suggest that China is not influential. And precisely because China's influence now is already global. So China doesn't need a sphere of influence that is very difficult and costly to maintain. So these are the uh the two differences uh between uh China and Russia. Now, let me uh share with you one of my observations. When Chinese, especially when military experts look at Ukrainian war, we would define something very interesting. Why? Because from the beginning until now, none of the remarks made by President, President Biden or by NATO as senior officials have said that they would intervene militarily. But we always have comments from the United States how they might intervene militarily or even just now suggested by Admiral Carano about American ambiguity. So why is this? If we compare, now let's compare Chinese military and Russian military. Who is stronger? Apart from a nuclear arsenal, which is much smaller, China's military strength is not necessarily less formidable than that of Russia. Let me tell you why. First of all, our armed forces is the largest in the world. Second, our military spending is three times higher than Russia. Three, we have even two aircraft carrier, which is more than one of Russia and more are to be built. And the PLA has fought all enemies after the founding of People's Republic of China. So we have stamina and courage to fight against anybody. So this is a, this is a comparison. Then now let me come to the, the final question about Taiwan. Yes, some people have already pointed out, these two issues are different. One is about sovereignty, another is about actually sphere of influence. But if for any reasons that we have a war in Taiwan, I believe the war, which must would be much, much more ruthless or bigger in scale than that of Ukraine. Why? Because this is about a sovereignty in which there is no room for compromise. So therefore, this is a zero-sum game. I personally would doubt that should a war erupt, we would at any stage come to talk about ceasefire or to negotiate any terms. No, it won't happen. Once the war is on, then the war will rage on until the end. And the end means the victory of mainland China. So from the very beginning, the war cannot be a low-scale, low-instance, low intensity war. And of course, Chinese is quite clear that there might be involvement of the United States, Japan, and even Australia. But then, of course, it's up to you to choose what kind of choice you are going to make. But we take that into account, of course. The, then what about the results? We don't know because it has not happened. But according to the war games of the United States and the uh the witnesses of American senior officials at Congress, I would say that they haven't talked with full confidence that uh the United States would win. But of course, this is not a reason for China, yeah, to be uh to be conceited. I would say honest, honestly, that the geographic geographical conditions are more favorable to mainland China. And of course, China enjoys comprehensive stripes with adequate logistic supply. So we're putting all this together, time is on the side of mainland China. Then let me ask directly the question posed by Mister Kudo to me. When shall we do that? Okay, well, first of all, I would say none, none of us in China or mainland China is willing to use force against Taiwan. Because what is the use of a totally battered Taiwan for us? And it's not good for world economy and it would completely affect the security in East Asia. Then, but according to our national law on uh uh anti-secession, there are three conditions for the mainland to use force. I believe, well, the Taiwan uh independent forces won't endorse us to declare independence. Because the first condition for us to use force is they declare independence. No, they won't. Because even, even the DPP would say that they have already the factual independence. Why would they declare it, knowing that it would definitely will use force? And then the second thing is major events that lead to the separation of Taiwan. I still cannot figure out what kind of major events those are. But then, this is what I'm going to talk about. The third condition for mainland China to use force, that is a complete uh loss of the possibility of peaceful reunification. Why is this is important? That is, so long as mainland China believes there is still possibility of peaceful reunification, we would not use force. And therefore, it is important for Taiwanese authority to convince mainland China that there is still possibility of peaceful reunification. If mainland China believes such a possibility is lost, then the situation would become dangerous. But of course, we at the same time must be fully militarily, militarily prepared. That's with taking into account the possible intervention of the United States and the allies. So eventually, whether the men, mainland China will use force or not, it depends very much on how Taiwanese authority act. And they themselves have to consider in the last few years, what about the situation across the strait? Has it improved or has it worsened? And if it has worsened, what's the reason behind that? During the Taiwanese predecessor, Ma Ying-jo's administration, there is enough kindness and kindness and generosity from mainland China. Because the mainland believe sooner or later, so long as the two sides continue to integrate with each other, then peaceful reunification is still hopeful. If the conclusion of mainland China is that there is no hope of peaceful reunification, as I said just now, then it's a dangerous signal. Now, let's look at Hong Kong. Hong Kong was chaotic for a while, very much to the wish of the Western countries. But what has happened? We very quickly put Hong Kong under stability. So do not doubt about our capability of managing a chaotic situation. Then I would say, finally, when people, especially people in the West, talk about Taiwan, they seem to consider this is a democracy against autocracy. Therefore, the sympathy of the international community of the whole world is with Taiwan. This is wrong. Mainland China also wants its people to live a happy life and will also want our country to be strong, to be democratic in our own way. Of course, there is a different interpretation of democracy. But democracy itself, if you just open your dictionary, you would find that there are so many layers of its interpretation. But so if you take care of about the feeling of Taiwanese people, you would also have to take care of the feeling of one point four billion people, of whole Chinese people, including, including uh those people in Taiwan. So which is, which matters more? And think about the future of the world. The war in Ukraine will go on, but it cannot change the fact that the political and economic shift will continue to move to East Asia with China in the center. So this is not a question of who is on the right side of history. This right side of history is the will of people of mainland China. This is my argument. Thank you.
Domo arigatou gozaimashita. Jasanino, ano kana.
Thank you very much for the input by the uh three uh experts. Let's open the floor to questions and answers. Are we missing Mister Lin Zeng? Did Mister Lin Zeng drop off? Let me uh give, let me pose the first question to Mister Colonel, Admiral Colonel. Your points were very clear to me. Admiral Colonel, in your mind, in terms of the Taiwan issue, the US, in the event that China use, uses force, US will not respond to that militarily? In your mind? It is a situation currently that a fuzzy strategy does not work, but what do you, what are your views? In terms of Taiwan, in for, for Taiwan, I undoubtedly the US would respond, take military action uh because of Japan. US Marines are stationed in Okinawa and the largest fleet, the seventh fleet, is in Yokosuka. If Taiwan erupts right in front, the US forces in Okinawa and Yokosuka not acting would mean the US essentially abandoning itself. So I don't think that would be the case in my mind. However, if uh China rather China, I saw how the US stopped engaging in action out of because of the threat of nuclear war. So I think China now understands uh the possibility of US inaction. And by taking the Ukrainian crisis into account, there has to be a clear strategy for intervention and not to fudge the issue. That's for the US in order not to mislead uh the, the, mislead China and that would be a way of peaceful deterrence. Mister Greco, do you have your hand up?
Yes, thanks. Can you hear me? So, okay. So I, I fully concur with, with, with those that were saying that, of course, there are more differences than similarities between the two cases we are considering, Taiwan and Ukraine. And indeed, parallels may be misleading. First of all, of course, the status, status of Taiwan is different with one of Ukraine. Very few countries recognize it as an independent country while no one buys Russia argument that the Ukrainian state is a fictitious and invented one. Uh but uh on the other hand, we know that Ukraine is not covered by, is not part of NATO, is not covered by Article Five of NATO. Uh so it doesn't enjoy security assurances similar to the ones that are, that are granted to other, to NATO countries. While US, in any case, is committed to the defense of Taiwan, although with this attitude of strategic ambiguity, which is fairly understandable that we, you have underlined. So I think this second aspect is particularly important because perhaps all eyes are on the Ukraine conflict also to see how much US is ready and willing to use military power. This applies specifically also to the Biden administration. So Mister Miyamoto said China is interested in testing US over Taiwan. Uh for these reasons, I think um experts are examining carefully if at what extent US is inclined to use military uh power in the national crisis. That's for me a, a question that is, is a great reference in Ukrainian crisis. This certainly is a factor that the China is considering. So I, I have two questions. Uh first of all, uh you said that there are risk of incidents or, or also misleading uh miscalculation leading to military confrontation. This is a widely felt uh risk. My question is, what more can be done in the present circumstances to establish new confidence and security measures to avert such role, such risk? The second question relates to the argument that you made, some of you, that the grand cause can precipitate a conflict. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? What type of contingencies are you referring to? Particularly, are there developments in the domestic scene of Taiwan that can become a trigger in this? Because we know Chinese declaration of several times that some type of declaration can be considered a possible cause for an intervention against Taiwan. So I understand, of course, it's a difficult issue, but just to have a better idea of the perception, what can be a trigger of this conflict?
So I would like to go to Ambassador Miyamoto after Mr. Joshi. Dr. Joshi? Dr. Joshi, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Koda-san. I just have a brief question, and my question is to Bo. There's a very forceful presentation on China's position, on what China thinks of Taiwan and what are China's red lines. It's been presented very, very forcefully. Now, looking at the topic we have today, you know, Taiwan in the context of what has just happened in Ukraine. My own assessment is that, given United States strategic ambivalence on the issue of Taiwan, should things come to such a pass where military conflict becomes inevitable in the courts, the response is going to be probably sanctions and nothing more than that, but could be very, very, very hard sanctions. Now, would those have an effect? What kind of sanction would come in on China in this kind of situation? What would be their impact? Would it even have any impact on China's actions in Taiwan in this situation?
To whom are you addressing the question, Dr. Joshi? Dr. Joshi?
Oh, this is Juzao Bo, our colleague from TISS. I mean, he gave a very forced presentation, so that is why the question.
Okay.
And Linze, maybe you would like to respond also?
So let's have Ambassador Miyamoto give a concise response to the extent possible. We are running out of time. Do we not have Ambassador Miyamoto? Ambassador Miyamoto? My apologies. Please keep it brief to the extent possible. Now, the grand cause for China, meaning independence of Taiwan, that is the clear cause for China to act. And the fact that Taiwan is exercising democracy would present a significantly difficult challenge. If Taiwan decides to become, achieve independence through a democratic process, what to do is the question. The choice, how many democracies would choose to abandon Taiwan in that event? I think this would be a dilemma for many, large dilemma for many countries. That, this means the Taiwanese people, citizens within a democratic process, what would trigger a military, Chinese military action? With that understanding, I think with a deep understanding insights into that, Taiwan has to decide on actions. For example, a national referendum in China to choose independence, then China would have no choice but to act. Maybe, if I'm wrong, Dr. Zhou, please correct me. But I do believe if there is a national referendum in Taiwan over independence, then China would have to, would resort to military action. But that's a possible option under a democratic process, putting us all in a difficult position. How do we act? If possible, if the Taiwanese public can make a decision not to pursue that option in a democratic way would be a better way. Dr. Zhou?
Well, yes, thank you.
I'm sorry to your question by Dr. Joshi, responsible by Dr. Zhou.
Okay. Well, the question is, what kind of sanction might be applied to China and how would China respond? First of all, I wish to say that throughout the history of People's Republic, China, we have many sanctions, many, many sanctions. So about China's defense industry, we always say our nuclear weapons, our satellites, our rockets are just developing digits because we have sanctions. But have all these actions really played such an important or effective role? The answer is probably no. And then, when it comes to this question of sovereignty, well, this is really, really vital for us, is critical for us, so we would not mind that sanction, that much at all. And besides, in 10 years' time, China definitely will become the largest economy in the world in terms of GDP, right? The most people say 2030, so it's less than 10 years. So if you have sanction on a small countries, normally, that might work if you work on it collectively. But on such a largest economy, this largest economy in the world, how effective can it be? It cannot be that every country would be united against China, right? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That's clear. Mr. Goma and Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson from Singapore. So Mr. Goma first, then Mr. Anderson next, and then Mr. Koda, Admiral Koda after. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for the three very interesting presentations. Maybe two quick comments, you know, in terms of self-confidence, which is apparently quite high in China and Russia these days, maybe because it is after the situation in Afghanistan during the last summer. But something which was completely underestimated by Russia was a level of resistance from the Ukrainian people. And I'm wondering if we could make a parallel for the expected level of resistance for the people living in Taiwan in case of conflicts. Second, second point about, you know, the NATO enlargements. I think it's always important to remind that, in fact, it is primarily countries which want to join NATO rather than the opposite. And that's precisely countries such as Baltic States, Poland and others, which decided to join just to get away from the Russian historical sphere of influence. So don't, I think, misinterpret, you know, all this stuff about, you know, NATO from a Russian point of view. An additional point, in fact, NATO is very useful for Russia to justify since three decades its own power organization, to justify the conscript system, to justify to have this level of military spending, for instance. Now, my question is to Mr. Shu Bo. I would like him to comment, if he would like to do so, about the statement made by Russians and China in the Fourth of February about this idea of China and Russia have a democratic model. He said a word on that. But much more important for us, I think, it's also a question for Sun Choi. What about this idea of a format between China, Russia and India, which was mentioned in this document? Thank you.
Sorry, what China and Russia, Xinjiang, I thought it was Xinjiang. What's your last question? Last sentence, I could not understand it.
Okay. My last question was about the statements between China and Russia on Fourth of February.
Yes.
This declaration, and in this document, there is the possibility for specific issues of a format between China, Russia and India. And if you could elaborate on that, it would be helpful.
China, Russia.
India.
Oh, India.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Shall I talk about now or later?
Now, please.
Okay, right. Well, with the Dr. Joshi here, I'm most keen to talk a bit about India. I think India's position was and is close to that of China, no matter how India pretend to be on American line for a while. Why is that? Let me talk about you. Quad, the four-country organization in the Indian Ocean, yeah, United States, Japan, Australia and India. So who is most important? India. Why? Because all the three other countries are already allies. So the link keeping is India. So, but this time, in the Ukrainian war, India's silence was well highlighted because 70% of its military hardware relies on Russia because it is buying S400 from Russia. So therefore, it cannot afford to criticize Russia. China, actually, in this case, is more positive because China is trying to strike on the two sides of the same coin. First, to have the so-called legitimate understanding of the legitimate concern of Russia over NATO's passion, and then to respect sovereignty and territorial integrity. So I believe China and India's relationship in the future will improve because even talking about maritime issue, India's maritime law is very much like a China's maritime book. Although they talk about freedom and navigation and free and Indo-Pacific, this is nonsense because the oceans are always free and open. And remember, in the year before last, the USS ship John Paul Jones challenged India in India's exclusive economic zone, and the seventh fleet issued a letter on that, and India led a protest. And India's exclusive economic zone is the 130th Indian ocean. That means for the United States, the Indian ocean is not so free, is not so open because of India. So how can India satisfy itself with the United States? India, like China, have the same reservation or UN Convention on Law of Sea, Article 298, exactly the same. So they are not the birds of the same feather. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson from Singapore, followed, to be followed by Koda-san. Thank you for waiting. Mr. Anderson, please take the floor.
Thank you. I'll just make a few points about the Taiwan issue. Now, some political analysts have argued that China will take advantage of US destruction over Ukraine and use that as an opportunity to attack Taiwan. But I don't think so. Because unless Taiwan does something foolhardy, like proclaim its independence, China is unlikely to risk an invasion of Taiwan. And they won't because, I think, for the following reasons. Taiwan strategically is a much more important territory to the US interests than the Ukraine. Taiwan's production of IT chips and semiconductors is crucial to America's economic struggle with China over advanced digital technologies and supply chains. There's also the question about how impactful the economic sanctions have been. Now, China is much more plugged in to the international economic system than Russia is. So it will have to face a tremendous concerns over that, and it will know that because of its current problems with the United States, the US and others will be watching what China does very closely on this. So these are the economic reasons, but the more important reasons, I think, are the strategic reasons. So like Russia, China will have to face a more resolute US together with its allies in Asia. Certainly China, but possibly even Australia and South Korea. You can expect Europe to join in a wide array of sanctions. And I think that one of the speakers made the point about the Ukraine not being in NATO, which is why the US didn't intervene, and I think that is right. I don't like to disagree with people, but I'm afraid that I think that it wasn't just about the question of nuclear war, that the Americans refused to intervene into the Ukraine. I think the Russians and Mr. Putin also would be afraid of nuclear war, which is why even though he made the statement, he didn't increase the threat level of the question of the nuclear alert, and neither did the Americans. So I think it was more a signal to the West, please do not intervene and bring in the nuclear question. But the very fact that the response in terms of reinforcing the NATO allies, those countries in NATO showed that Americans, if the Russians were foolhardy enough to attack any of the NATO countries, they would come to their defense. But coming back to Asia, I think after the pressure, after the debacle of Afghanistan, of abandoning Afghanistan, if it seemed to be abandoning Ukraine in Europe, we cannot afford to do so to Taiwan and then lose all credibility. Otherwise, it will be then, the question then would be that all you have to do is threaten the US with the use of nuclear weapons, and then countries who have nuclear weapons will get their way. And it's not just about China, it's not just about Russia. You can talk about Iran and other countries. There are many countries in the world that have a nuclear capability, although perhaps not the same sort of delivery systems. So I think that if the worst-case scenario happens and China does take that action, it will face a resolute America and it will end its allies, partly also because the Americans would not have been distracted by a Russian attack and by having to fight war in Europe. China also would have been alarmed at the poor performance by Russia's military in Ukraine because China is reliant on Russia's weapon systems and equipment through purchases and modified reverse technology. The People's Liberation Army and Navy has no recent experience in warfare either. And we all know that unlike the Ukraine, which Russia crosses as a land border, an amphibious assault would be a complicated operation requiring inter-service cooperation and interoperability. Coordination that the China's military has no experience in an actual combat situation. Now, this is a very important point, and it will not be easy. And even if China does get across, it would have seen how resolute the Ukrainians had fought. And it would have to face similar actions with the Taiwanese, of course, with supplies of enormous supplies of weapons and all coming from the West. There's also the question about the question, some, the important point was made that with Ukraine, it was an invasion of another that with Ukraine, it was an invasion of another country. But in China, nobody or very few countries would dispute that China, that Taiwan does belong to China. But what is the implication of that in terms of a potential invasion or an actual invasion? It would mean China is not invading another country. China is fighting a civil war. And it would have to take into account the implications on that, on its own people. And with the idea of bringing the country together and the signals it sends to not only its neighbors, but to the rest of the world. So I think these are very critical issues that Mr. C, who is a very wise man, a strategic thinker also, but probably a much more cautious person than Mr. Putin. So unless there is a clear provocation by the Taiwanese, I do not see China actually crossing the Taiwan Straits. But I want to flag three very worrying things that are happening that might let things spiral out of control. I think Mr. C made a strategic mistake in putting a timeline on unification between the mainland and Taiwan. He said it would take place, I think, on the hundredth anniversary of the People's Republic of China, that would be in twenty forty-nine. That's many years ahead, but it's not that far either. And this will put pressure on him, if he's still alive, or his successors on this issue. I think a second concern is the social media. That is, that if you monitor the social media coming out of China, you will find that a lot of people there, the Chinese population are even more belligerent than the Chinese government on this because they are strongly urging the invasion of Taiwan. And I think this is, this is not a good sign in terms of should should a difficult situation emerge and there is a need for caution to take place. And the third point is the question of we, like everybody else, China is keeping a close watch on what's happening in the Ukraine. But the question is, how much of that is actually filtering up to the leadership? I make this point because there is a different way between how strong, powerful authoritarian leaders run their country and are prepared to take advice that may be contrary to what they will feel or what they interpret or what they want to hear and those of other countries. Now, for example, when I was in the Foreign Ministry before my retirement, we would have discussions and there have been times and I would disagree with the Foreign Minister and even the Prime Minister. But I do, but I know that when I leave the room, regardless of whichever decision that they've taken, I will not lose my job. I'm not sure it's the same in all authoritarian countries since I've also seen a different way that, say, people in Cambodia or Saudi Arabia or elsewhere have reacted. So my concern is, is the right information of the situation in the Ukraine, but more importantly, also the situation in Taiwan and all percolating up to Mr. C and his advisors? Because that will be crucial also in the sort of decisions and reactions that they would take. Finally, I would like to pose a question to Mr. Shobo. And that is, what would China want from the US and its allies to defuse tensions on Taiwan? In other words, if you had a wish list that you could give to the Americans, the Americans love to tell people what to do. But in this case, if you had a wish list, what would you identify as what you would like the US and the allies to do in order to defuse the tensions on Taiwan? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corda. Admirer. Um, the, he was the Pacific Commander.
Serious question or key question to Mr. Dobo. So I think before I speak, I think it's better to ask Mr. Dobo to respond.
I see, okay. So yes, Mr. Shobo?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, so you want to be to answer Anderson's question first, right?
Hi.
Okay, okay, good.
Yes, please go ahead.
Well, I will be very brief. I think the best thing that we, the United States, should do is not to send the wrong signal as to encourage the moves on independence or secession. Because you see, we, first of all, there is a kind of ambiguity. Yeah, yeah, in all these documents, those with mainland China, the so-called Taiwan Relation Act, there is plenty of ambiguity. And then, ever since Donald Trump, like, you know, Michael Pompeo actually has been trying his best to smash all the windows, to let the cold world, you know, flow in. He just want to leave the ground as messy as possible for Joe Biden. And Joe Biden, we have been watching. And we have, we of course have had some hope. But now we conclude that he actually, the policy, at least his policy, I'm not saying, not talking about what he's thinking, his policy is very much a follow-up of that of Donald Trump. There isn't much change in it. And this kind of idea of that China wants to drive, China wants to establish fierce influence in the Indo-Pacific is totally nonsense. Because this worries me. Why? Because it seems to me that America's judgment is wrong. You see, when Donald Trump initially published the National Security Strategy in two thousand seventeen, they say China wants to drive United States out of Indo-Pacific. But how can China do that? The United States is an Indo-Pacific country. And with us having only one logistic station in Djibouti, how can you drive the United States out of Indo-Pacific? But this time, in America's Indo-Pacific strategy published in February, they even say something further, that China wants to establish severe influence in the Indo-Pacific. That is why, in my remarks, I tell you that there is a difference between influence and fierce influence. In one word, China is not so stupid to establish a boundless, severe influence that it cannot maintain. Look at the PLA's operation overseas. All PLA's operations overseas are humanitarian in nature, that peacekeeping, counter-parasity or disaster relief. China doesn't have wishes of policing the world. So in that regard, China doesn't wish to have allies because our own strength is enough because it is only focused in Western Pacific. That's enough.
Thank you. So the Admiral Corda, so you have some remarks. So how much time do we have? Maybe two minutes or three minutes at most.
Yeah, the first, you know, the, say, the basic question, the developments in Ukraine. I would say ignite the Taiwan issues immediately. I don't think so. But, you know, without discussing the theory or thoughts, I think PLA and the United States are trying to depict as many strategic lessons, tactical lessons through the maneuver of the President Putin and response of the Ukraine people. And those are the real combats that are happening now today in Ukraine. And say, I think everybody agrees that Russia's original plan was already collapsed. So I think, and also, you know, the, Mr. Dobo, the mentioned the differences, but also there are some similarities. And especially for China, you know, the military operations against Taiwan. You know, of course, there are geographical differences, but could be similar to some extent to this, the Mr. Putin's or Russians' operation in Ukraine. You know, they say using the hybrid and then they make the military maneuver. But that didn't go well or does not go well now. So the PLA is trying to depict tactical lessons and try to implement those lessons into their new applies. Or strategically, you know, they say self-righteous maneuver or determined intent of the President Putin, who does not listen to the inputs of his subordinate, made a kind of this war, not the Ukraine war, but the Putin's war. And Putin practically lost almost all of the world's support. And would it be a favorable situation when China would go into Taiwan? Making all the world as an, you know, the unwelcome situation of Chinese maneuver? You know? So this is the kind of the lessons Beijing is trying to get. But also, you know, the United States is also learning many lessons. For example, just the Admiral Kawanu mentioned, you know, the no military intervention, military intervention into the Ukraine. Did it really work to deter? Or is it working now in support of the Ukraine operations? I think USA is also trying to get many lessons as possible. That would be a kind of the new textbook for the Taiwan operations from both sides. So in this context, I think that Dobo, Mr. Dobo, beautifully explained the Chinese government position, though he didn't say himself did not represent Beijing. But really, what he had said in this arena is almost identical to the Beijing's position. But I think Beijing is learning a lot of lessons. So, you know, the developments in Ukraine has been providing the many lessons. And either the US, NATO, including US, or maybe Japan, or China, which side would get more precious lessons from the Ukraine? Would be a kind of the new decisive element for the future preparation to deter, to deter the Chinese military invasion into Taiwan. So this is kind of my reading. And also, my one last concern is, you know, Mr. Dobo's many points are beautifully arranged. But I think this is my third time to listen to his story. Beautifully arranged. But listening, the more I listen to Mr. Dobo's points, the more I am convinced that this is the kind of the misjudgment of the Chinese leadership. That may, that Chinese leadership would make assessment over the US position. This is the strategic, you know, the miscalculation. So maybe too self-righteous. And China is measuring the world by your own standard. I don't think that is the most dangerous thing. You know, this is my, you know, the points tonight. And I'll stop here, thank you very much.
Can I ask a one question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah. Just tell me very briefly, what is my misjudgment or Beijing's misjudgment? On what? Because I'm confused. I'm not trying to challenge.
Okay, both, you know. Your misjudgment is Beijing's misjudgment. For example, US wargaming, US is losing. You know, that is the part of the story. But please think about the fundamental nature of the US war game. You know, wargaming is not the trump card to guarantee the victory. Losing in wargame and making the correction to the war plan is the real ways to get the triumphant. Triumph.
That's remarkable.
So, yeah, 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 but, so what you have said is, my point is, you are measuring the world by China's own standard. That is the most dangerous part. That is what I do want to say to you. Thank you.
Yeah, just one sentence. What I'm saying is, according to repeated American war games, it lose. So these are American war games. And then I concluded, that means there is no guarantee the US might win. So I did not say China would definitely win. I'm just saying this because of America's own war games.
That's what we call a rhetoric, okay?
Okay, we are running out of time. But Mr. Linze, are you with us still? Mr. Linze? Mr. Linze?
I'm still here.
We, in Mr. Linze, so we have only four minutes left. But there were questions addressed to you, Mr. Linze. And one of them was that the within Ukraine, well, the US has stated repeatedly that it will not go into Ukraine in order to avoid the World War Three. But so, but the same thing will happen if the US goes to help Taiwan. And Richard Laws often said that the US strategy is not work, is not working with regard to Taiwan. So America should have a more clear position. But the US still continues with the strategy of ambiguity. And how shall we adjust that? Or is that because the US government still thinks that this strategy is working?
Wow, as always, kudos on an excellent, big, complicated question. And my answer almost certainly is going to disappoint, both because I'm trying to observe the time limit. I guess the way I would approach it is, I want to go back to something that Josie said. I would actually put myself in the other end of the spectrum. I think that the most likely outcome, if China were to invade Taiwan, is that the United States would come to the aid of Taiwan militarily. I think that is the most likely outcome. Now, of course, the posture the United States has toward Taiwan is known as strategic ambiguity. So the American commitment to Taiwan is greater than the commitment to Ukraine, but it's also less than the commitment enshrined in the bilateral security treaties with Japan, with South Korea, with Australia. So it's important to keep that in mind. And I will note that in terms of the US position on Ukraine, I would not attribute the United States unwillingness to defend Ukraine based on a fear of nuclear war, but that the United States had never made a commitment to defend Ukraine. So this is not, Ukraine is not a member of NATO. So Article five and moral obligation, legal obligation that flows from it does not hold. Now, of course, in the case of Taiwan, one of the reasons for the United States to come to military aid of Taiwan is the failure to do so would have potentially catastrophic effects on America's commitments and credibility throughout East Asia. I mean, obviously, for audience in Japan, if the United States were not to come to the aid of Taiwan, that would raise real big questions about the credibility of any American commitment to Japan. Same with South Korea, same with Australia. But of course, when you have a policy that is based on strategic ambiguity, there is a potential outwear. there is a potential out where you don't act. And again, I think when we're talking about issues of what the United States will do, context will matter. I think it would be a different outcome if it is a Taiwanese government that declares independence against the wishes of the United States. Again, I can also imagine, Stefan alluded to it in his comments in the last panel. American elections may go in a very different direction, a very different president in 2025, who may choose not to back up Taiwan. And likely, I don't think this is necessarily the most probable outcome. But, you know, if the United States is embroiled in a war elsewhere in the world, then the ability to come to, need to come to the aid of Taiwan is going to be seen through a very different filter. But one last thing, I want to go back and Mr. Coda was quite right that the reason you run war games is so you can discover your weaknesses. So then you can take steps to address them. And I fully expect and see the United States military doing that. But above and beyond that, I think it's the case that the Taiwanese are spending a lot of time trying to decipher the lessons of the Ukrainian resistance. And one of the consequences of that may be for Taiwan to change its own self-defense policies and weapons purchases in ways that might make it the porcupine that can't be swallowed. So I will just stop right there, if I may.
Thank you very much for answering to my complex questions. So we are going to close this session here. And thank you very much for these three speakers, Mr. Miyamoto, Mr. Koda, and Mr. Zhou for your discussions. Thank you. And we were able to have very serious discussion on this. And right now, Ms. Nishimura-san told me that we are not going to have a break before going into the next session, right? Miyamoto-sama, Kawa-no-sama. Mr. Miyamoto and Mr. Kawano and Mr. Koda, thank you very much for your participation. So this closes the second session, and I thank you all for your participation. And this is out of our selfish consideration on the East Asia because we are already past eleven in the afternoon, so we are going to be a third session. I would like to introduce the panelists for the third session from the UK, the Royal Institute of International Affairs, Mr. Hans Kundanani, the Director of the European Program. Welcome, Hans.
Thank you for having me.
And to and to all representatives of the think tanks from ten countries, please continue to participate to the extent possible. Yasushi Kuro will moderate the third session. Thank you. It's eleven PM, quickly approaching twelve PM in Japan. But this is the most important topic in a way. It's about international order on the verge of death. How to revive that? With overlapping, of course, topics with session one, but with the goal of developing that topic. And it's a complex issue as well. Prime Minister Kishida mentioned, addressed in his video speech that we are at a historical turning point where the question is whether the international order can be protected. International order is on the brink of extinction. How do we revive it? In terms of integrity of sovereignty and territory, the mechanism for ensuring that integrity must be restored as well and protected. To, for this session, we welcome Mr. Joshi from India, Mr. Greco from Italy, and Mr. Kundanani. And also Mr. Leal from Brazil, Carlos. Mr. Rohinton, Mr. Rohinton hasn't spoken much either. I would like to ask first Mr. Joshi, Mr. Greco, and Mr. Kundanani to speak in turn for about eight minutes each. Mr. Joshi, if you're ready.
Yeah, I was muted. Thank you so much, Kudosan. It's always a pleasure being with colleagues at the General Institute. And like all others, I'm extremely sorry that we could not make it. We tried very hard, but we could not make it. We join you in Tokyo. This is a very important time, of course, with you having this discussion. And the first two sessions have really been very vibrant, very illuminating. And really thank all the participants for what we've heard in this. You know, we are talking about what is to be done to revive the disintegrating international order. Some would have said it's already disintegrated. There's no international order to revive anymore. And the international order died in the last week of February. The developments in Ukraine have surprised and shocked everyone, you know, by the sheer rapidity with which they moved and the war actually escalated. And as I said before in the morning, when we were speaking, that, you know, both sides seems to have been trapped within their own worst insecurities. Now, how do we get out of here? We need to get back. We, as far as India is concerned, we are alarmed, we are shocked at what has happened to the state of the international world order. We believe that we need to get it back on track. And I was asked repeatedly as to why is India, you know, not taking the stand with everybody else? And why is India amongst the ones who abstained? India has abstained. India has not voted for Russia. And you see, India's stand is very clear. It is tempered, yes, some people pointed out during the sessions. It is tempered by interests. That is correct. There are interests involved. Interests, you all know. First of all, yes, there is, there is a defense, the defense of this is not as large as was made out by my Chinese committee. But yes, there is, you know, a legacy interest that exists, but that is not the main point. There is another interest that we are part of Asia. And that that really underlines why we need to take the stand which we have taken. India's stand was very clear. It has been critical, extremely critical of the violation of borders and the international law. And it does not support Russia in this at all. It, not only Russia, it does not support any country which tries to do that. Abstention itself is a strong statement against the partner with which it has had a relationship. And this relationship has, it maintained this relationship even as there was a direct threat to it across a border where you had a hundred thousand troops lined up over the last two years, which had incidents. And yes, India was in touch with Russia over those incidents as well. So there are, there are larger things at play. India's support for Ukraine always remains. It remains in terms of humanitarian assistance. It also remains in terms of what they are going through. This is not something we want to wish upon any country. And India is very, very clear on that. Now, you know, we find Ukraine in the midst of a very, at the moment, at this particular moment, that things are of a very uncertain equilibrium of war, you know, which threatens to spiral out of control. And that is dangerous. Some of the conversations we've been hearing are also pointing in the same direction. That one side is crazy, God knows what they are going to end up doing. Someone is probably, Russia has his hand on the nuclear button. There are some who would argue that Russia is holding back from using all its might on Ukraine. Others would emphasize that the Russian army has been challenged by the resistance and is all of the ordinary Ukrainians. I think both are true. Both are probably correct. And that is why I'm calling it a highly unstable equilibrium war. And I can only hope, and India only hopes, that all sides realize that they are locked in a situation where they are going to be no winners. Even if Russia were to militarily conquer Ukraine, now holding Ukraine, holding those, you know, very patriotic people and created by its own actions, and controlling the resulting insurgency is going to be impossible. And this fear, distrust, and hatred engendered by a unilateral invasion like this is something which lasts a few generations. It is not something which a country like Russia can get over. You know, in this generation of Putin, Putin will leave a legacy which is disastrous if it thinks it can militarily conquer Ukraine and install a puppet government there. So we, you need to find a solution which has to restore the balance in Ukraine and ultimately reach a negotiated settlement that is acceptable to both parties. What is worrying is, what had happened was a breakdown in communication between the warring parties at some point of time. There is some news, it is probably getting restored, it is getting back on track. We can only keep our fingers crossed. See, the larger question, how do we, from here, how do we restore the international order? Does it now, after the experience of Ukraine, after what we've seen, not just in Ukraine, but many other incidents, that unilateral actions by certain parties, there seems to be no way of stopping them? We are afraid of unilateral action across our border. There is no question we can support any kind of unilateral action. And there is no gainsaying, saying that this action taken by Russia against Ukraine is an attack on national sovereignty against the UN chart. It is repents, it is condemnable. It is also true that unilateralism begets unilateralism. And the attack of Ukraine has been the consequence, it's a repeated failure of the global community to rise up in one voice against such actions in the past. A rules-based order cannot survive unless that order is truly universal. And the global community has been failing in this duty for at least the last two decades. And multilateralism has been on a precipitous decline, which may be past the point of no return. And that is, that is dangerous. The only response we've been seeing are economic sanctions, which I believe are an extremely blunt and ineffective policy tool in the face of actions like this. Now, imposing, they impose insufficient costs on the targeted governments and many times disproportionate ones on the most vulnerable populations. And no, it's a kind of tool, you're letting loose a snake whose tail is in its own mouth. It is devouring itself. Sanctions work in a globalized world based on trade. The more the world gets fragmented and de-globalizes, the less effective sanctions are. And so for us, you know, if there is going to be greater fragmentation, then the weapon has lost all its power. It does not work. So there is, you know, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. So at the moment, what I would say is that the path to a new world order at the moment does seem to lie, unfortunately, through a new world disorder, you know, which is being marked by increasing fragmentation. Countries are becoming more protectionist. We are seeing a fragmentation of politics, we are seeing a fragmentation of trade, fragmentation of data, communication. And this is the fragmentation which is an extremely worrying sign. And the fallout, the fallout of Ukraine, or the fallout which has been immediately, which we are seeing, is probably going to see a greater emphasis on regional security architectures. You know, you, you might see that it is, it is good Europe today has committed itself to spending more and assuming greater agency. That is important. Countries will perhaps need to take on greater agency in, you know, emboldishing their own securities. And that is a message, I think, which goes across to countries across, whether it is Japan, whether it is South Korea, whether it is in the case of Taiwan, and countries in the Indo-Pacific as well. India has been strong always in underlining its resolve. The record itself, which was discussed, is not, as far as India is concerned, a security architect. We do not want a security architecture like NATO in our background. We are scared of. We are not sure which way it is going to go. So there is a problem there. In the countries will have to take greater agency in this world in safeguarding their own security, in safeguarding their own interests. And ultimately, we need to find a way to get back to, you know, countries starting having conversation with each other. Diplomacy has to come back. Whether it comes back through Armageddon, I hope not. You know, we, things do not escalate out of control. Sense prevails, and we start restoring order in those situations, especially in Ukraine, at this particular point of time. There are countries which can intervene, should intervene, and help out to find a solution if there is a breakdown in communication which has happened. I hope, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, that things work out for the better. We do not go down the path we are scared of, we are afraid of. We do not want that situation develop. And India is willing to step in and do everything to get this structure back on its legs.
Thank you very much. Yes, it is a relief to hear what you've just said. Mr. Greco from Italy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kuro, again for giving me the floor. First of all, a short remark on Russia-China partnership is the topic of the first guiding question. Of course, much has been said on that, but I want to say that I also doubt that China can offer Russia the economic and financial lifeline it is looking for. China seems anxious to limit collateral damages to Chinese interests and lacks, among other things, the technological capacity to substitute for the West. The most effective way for China to help Russia would be to invest heavily in Russia. And this would imply heavy cost that China would be probably reluctant to sustain, not to speak of the uncomfortable position in which this would place Russia, as a minor junior partner has been said several times. Second, it appears that security factors and dynamics will become increasingly crucial. We had become somewhat accustomed to the idea that economic power, economic relations were the major factors in shaping the international environment. But with the big increase in security risk and rivalries in many regions, we must review. Indeed, we are reviewing this approach. Security alliances and alignments may increasingly take the precedence over economic relations and partnership, and the Western countries should be ready to renounce some economic benefits to safeguard their security. Third point, this new perspective giving more weight to security dynamics and military power does not imply that we lose sight of the need to engage in the difficult and painful process of adjusting to the tectonic shift of power in international relations towards Asia. The trend towards a relative decline of West power is likely to continue. Fourth point, Ukraine war has placed the even sharper need the key importance of transatlantic relations, what we can term the first inner circle of the Western system. NATO countries have shown a remarkable degree of cohesion and solidarity, and also the readiness to enhance the alliance that they're in posture. This encouraging sign of the solidity and effectiveness of the alliance will be put to serious tests, no doubt, in the coming weeks and months. And there remain at least two big question marks. First, the accurate capacity of Europeans to strengthen their defense capacities and engage more seriously in intra-European defense integration. The second question is the solidity of the US domestic consensus around renewed transatlantic commitments, given the past reservations which manifested themselves especially during the Trump administration and the persistent political polarization on the domestic scene. Looking beyond NATO, and this is my fifth point, and beyond the transatlantic relation, what we have seen is a close alignment with West and Europe of countries such as Japan and Australia. And the G seven has acted rather effectively, I would say. But it has also become fairly clear that the Community or Alliance of Democracies project, which President Biden attached, touches great importance, a structural limitation when it comes to address a crisis with such huge political and economic implication. A country like India, Sun Joy has explained to us, is clearly wary of this type of alignment that almost won't be beholden to any other powers, despite the improved ties with America and the EU. And Turkey itself, as we know, has rejected calls to join US and Europe sanction. Sixth point, in any case, the geopolitical tensions with Russia and China are likely to make it increasingly difficult to cooperate with them to protect global commons and address global issues. The West's effort to preserve more collateral cooperation in several fields of common interest by somewhat insulating this cooperation by somewhat insulating this cooperation from the growing political geopolitical and security tensions has come up against many obstacles. A quite specific but telling example is the risk that a project like the International Space Station could, as we have seen, become another victim of the Ukraine war. Its fate is now in doubt. Space, outer space is one of the last remaining areas when where US and Russia have continued to cooperate in in principle of would therefore plenty of possibilities for common endeavors. Another example is the difficulty that due to the Ukraine war, the efforts to renew the Iran nuclear deal are experiencing. And of course, there are plenty of other examples. The ramification of the war on the process and structure of global cooperation will will be huge. And they add to a number of factors that have weakened the global cooperation agenda in recent times. The negative impact on the prospect of implementing or advancing the G twenty agenda will be considerable. As we have already seen under the Italy presidency, Italy presidency last year, Russia and China have taken a pronounced less collaborative attitude within the G twenty. And then now fear that the G twenty can be used to promote specific Western interests. The risk is that the deepening geopolitical and technological rivalries can prevent agreements to establish common rules. Regulatory frameworks in crucial areas such as outer space, cybersecurity and and data governance, also Sunjoy has emphasized. The prospect of a war divided in different regulatory areas and a growingly fragmented world has become more concrete. Finally, one should not underestimate the ideological component of the deepening tensions with China and Russia. As we have seen in the case of both Hong Kong and Ukraine, the competition is not only a security strategic one, but also stems from competing views and models of governance. In the case of Ukraine, this was a decisive factor since Putin clearly feared the contagion effect of a democratic Ukraine integrated into the Western system. The bottom lining is that for us Europeans, transatlantic cooperation as well as collaboration within the G seven is more crucial than ever. Although we are now, I hope, more aware of the key importance of acquiring a greater European strategic autonomy. Any opportunities to advance the global cooperation agenda should, of course, be exploited. Needless to say, we cannot afford to renounce our efforts to preserve the global framework of cooperation. But political realism suggests that we are obliged to consider more deeply and systematically the security and strategic implication of the current regional and global trends. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd invite Mr. Kuden Nani from Chatham House. So you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Kudo-san, it's really nice to be here. Like everyone else, I wish I was there with you in Tokyo. I came to Japan just before the pandemic started in spring of 2020. But I haven't been able to come back since then, obviously, and I I miss it. I hope I can come again pretty soon. What I will try to do is give perhaps a slightly different perspective on this question of how we revive the disintegrating international order. I heard some of the first session, I wasn't able to stay, and I didn't hear much of the second session. And I agree with a lot of what was said in the first session about defending the international order from threats, particularly from China and Russia. But in a sense, I think the way I think about this is that that's only half of the story. In the sense that I think if we do want to revive the disintegrating international order, I think we have to think not only about defending it, but also about reforming it. I think that's a sort of equally important part of of how we restore order is to think about some of the mistakes that that we have made. By which I mean the West, actually, in the last, I mean particularly the last thirty forty years since the Cold War ended. And I think actually that some of what is now happening with Russia, but also in Asia with China. This isn't, I I'm not defending Chinese or Russian actions, but I do think that what China and Russia are doing is actually exposing some of the problems with the international order that we've created, actually. And I think above all, I want us to be quite precise about the order that exists or has existed. Because I think often we're not very precise about this. We, you know, talk about a liberal international order often, or a rules based international order. But I think often we are not quite clear what we mean by that. We overlook some of the complexities involved in that. And and so I'll try to get into some of those complexities. And and I think what then happens is is that, you know, I think, and this is really, I think, you know, since the war started for understandable reasons, this is really now been the tendency in a lot of discussion is to see this in very simple terms as essentially a struggle between people who believe in international order, i.e. us, and people who want to destroy it, i.e. China and Russia. I actually think that a lot of the disputes that we're having are actually more about different kinds of order, different versions of of order. Rather than some of us being in favor of the liberal international order and some of us being against it. And so I'll try and explain a little bit more about that. And in particular, what a lot of this will revolve around is the concept of sovereignty. Because, you know, that certainly from the part of the discussion that I heard this morning, that was very much, you know, the center of it. Territorial integrity and state sovereignty, and obviously that's been violated by Russia. And that's then in turn seen as a threat to the international order that exists or existed. But actually, I think the relationship of the liberal international order with sovereignty and with state sovereignty is actually quite complex, and I'll try to I'll try to explain some of that. So the way I the way I think of the liberal international order is that it's complex in about four different ways. We tend to think of it as being this sort of almost monolithic thing which has existed, you know, since nineteen forty five and sort of emerged fully formed from the Atlantic Charter or something like that. And then has kind of remained intact until very recently, at which point it became threatened and therefore, as I say, we must defend it. Whereas I think the reality is is much more complicated, as I say, in four different ways. The first way is that it's evolved evolved over time. The the order that existed in nineteen forty five is not the order that we have now. I mean, even before the, you know, the Russian invasion. It's evolved over time and in particular, I mean, one could get into the complexities of that evolution. But for the sake of time, I want to draw a distinction between the Cold War order and the post-Cold War order. Because it seems to me that the post-Cold War order is very, very different from the Cold War order. And in particular, it's different in relation to this question around sovereignty. The post-war liberal international order's relationship with sovereignty, state sovereignty is a completely different one than the the Cold War order. And to put it very simply, state sovereignty was at the center of the Cold War order, what some people call the Yalta Order. That was very much the center of it. And I think what's happened in the post-Cold War order is that in different ways, we have actually, and as when I say we, again, I mean largely Europe and the United States, rather than China or Russia, what we have done is to actually undermine state sovereignty. And I'll come I'll come back to that in a second. The second sort of dimension of complexity, I think, is that the liberal international order has different elements. So it's evolved over time and it has different elements. And there are various different ways that you can break down the liberal international order into different elements. Again, for the sake of simplicity and and the limited time that we have, I'll just break it down into three elements, which are the security order firstly, secondly, the economic order, and thirdly, the human rights order. And I won't say too much about the economic order because, you know, given the impact of events in Ukraine, I want to focus particularly on the security order and the human rights order, which I think are very closely linked, but are also kind of at the center of what we're arguing about now, following the the Russian invention. All I'll say on the on the economic order is that, again, that has changed dramatically from the Cold War to the post-Cold War period. The the way that the economic order worked, you know, before the end of the Cold War was much less liberal in a sense. What's happened since the end of the Cold War is that the economic order has been liberalized. By the way, I think this is the case in the other two elements of the order as well, and and I'll come back to this. But the economic order has certainly been liberalized. And this has been in the context of sort of hyper-globalization since the end of the Cold War. And also the neoliberal term, which began in the nineteen seventies. And so what we have now is a is a much, much more liberal order than than we had before. And I happen to think, and other people have written this too, I happen to think that's a a problem. That this has created all kinds of problems in, you know, in terms of particularly inequality in our societies. I think this is partly what led to some of the political turmoil that we've seen in in Europe and the United States in the last few decades. And and so I think there's a long discussion to be had there about how you fix that. But let me, as I say, focus on more on the security order and the human rights order. I think, very briefly, it's also important to say this would be my third kind of dimension of the complexity, which is that the liberal international order has functioned very differently in different parts of the world. You know, it looks different in Europe than it does in Asia, particularly when we talk about security order. This has come up, I think, already in your discussions that, you know, European security order is very different from the Asian security order. Sunjoy was just making this point in relation to, you know, you have collective defense centered on NATO has been the the way in which the European security order has been organized. That's obviously not the case in Asia. It's been much more of a hub spoke model centered on bilateral security guarantees between the United States and individual countries. And also in particular, in the in the post-Cold War period, the the security order in Europe developed in in a in a in a in a very different way. I I'm thinking here of the Paris Charter and and so on. So I think, you know, what I think Russia has challenged is in particular the European security order rather than something broader than that. And then finally, the fourth dimension of the sort of complexity is that, you know, what when we say liberal international order is liberal, it's really not clear what that means. And it can mean liberal in, I think, at least three different senses. Is this political liberalism that we're talking about? Is it economic liberalism, which, you know, again, in the economic order, that's clearly part of it? Or is it liberalism in the international relations sense? In other words, as opposed to realism or other theories of international relations? In other words, you could imagine a sort of realist international order as opposed to a liberal international order. So, you know, that's all a very long way of saying this is all very, very complex. And it's not simply a case of order versus no order. But there are all kinds of different ways in which the order can exist. Let me then just just come to the 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 main point in a way that I wanted to make around around security order and the human rights order. Because I think it's really important to 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 point out, even at this moment, when it's quite difficult to say this, that the security order and the human rights order, it does seem to me that the West has created some of the problems with which we are now dealing. And what I mean by that is that in the post-Cold War period, both in the security order and the human rights order, what we essentially did was to qualify the principle of sovereignty which had dominated the international order up to that point. And, you know, in the security order, you can see very clearly how we did that. I'm thinking particularly here of Kosovo. You know, which Putin mentions, he obviously caricatures this when he mentions it. But I think there is a small grain of truth in what he says about about Kosovo, which is that NATO did carry out a military intervention against Serbia in nineteen ninety nine without a UN Security Council mandate. In other words, it broke the rules. Now, it did so because it thought that there was a much more important consideration than maintaining the rules, which was a genocide was happening. One can argue about whether that was the right thing to do or not, but I think we do have to say that we actually set a precedent there by by, you know, violating the sovereignty of Serbia and in that sense, breaking the rules. And I think the other thing we have to admit, after Kosovo, at least, not to mention some of the the subsequent conflicts that took place, is that it becomes quite difficult after Kosovo to say that NATO is a purely defensive alliance. You know, that that that, I think, was 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 the effect of of Kosovo. And then similarly, you know, this is very connected as well to the human rights order. Because we did a whole series of things in relation to human rights that, again, undermined the sort of unqualified nature of 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 sovereignty, which had been central to the international order up to that point. And I'm thinking here particularly of things like the International Criminal Court. But also, again, you know, the concept of of the responsibility to protect and humanitarian intervention of which Kosovo was an example. This was undermining the principle of sovereignty. So, I mean, really, all I want to say is that I think as we think about how we revive this disintegrating order, we have to think about some of those mistakes. I think we have to be honest with ourselves about some of those mistakes we've made. And I think we do have a little bit of a choice between, you know, what kind of order we want. Is it to go back to the Cold War order where state sovereignty is absolute? Or do we want to continue with this more liberal order, which I which I think actually does create instability, even if there are other reasons for doing it? I'll stop there.
Thank you very much for that input. We are running out of time. So let me quickly turn to the three panelists. If there are any questions or comments, in other words, for the three panelists, but we also want to hear from Rohinton as well. And Carlos, I think you had a PC problem. I do want to make sure that Carlos gets a turn. But Rohinton, please go ahead.
Kudo-san, thank you. I've been so listening carefully to what colleagues have been saying. And I have, I guess, two or three, let me let me make remarks in three sets. And again, in the spirit of what the others are saying, I think this is not about blaming the victim. On the other hand, context and history matter. And I think through the morning, my morning at least, we've heard a number of instances in which the situation now is the result of conscious decisions that several countries have taken, not just Russia and the Ukraine. But I I would begin with the point that Russia's miscalculation, epic as it might be, might be the result of how the West has reacted in the past to what Russia has done. It has the tactics that we now decry, attacking journalists, attacking hospitals, all of that, were test driven and the armaments were test driven in other parts of the world. Oligarchs, I think after Russia, Ukraine must be the country that is at least as corrupt and and has oligarchs. And and that holds of Russian political economy that we now worry about is the result of a flawed liberalization that goes back to the fall of the Berlin Wall and the split of the Soviet Union. And that's the flawed privatization that bred oligarchs and bred or sort of nourished authoritarianism as opposed to liberalism in some ways is the result of a twenty thirty year sequence that we're now seeing have come to play. And so my first point when we talk about rebuilding the international order is to put some specificity to what we heard from our colleague from the UK, which is let's let's be sort of clear on how we might move forward. Now, none of this will help in the short run. I have no views, because I'm not a security analyst, on what will happen the next six weeks or the next six months. But suppose I said to you that rather than freeze accounts that we had more concrete governance around money laundering. that we had more concrete governance around money laundering, maybe that's the way forward, so that we wouldn't have this kind of situation in which we welcome dirty money in our real estate markets and in our financial systems in the first place. And then we celebrate unity by sort of acting on it piecemeal. This is not a Russia oligarch problem. Time and again, leaks like the Panoply Papers have shown that corruption in many countries is something that breeds on itself. There have been proposals made to improve on our current highly imperfect money laundering system. There are vested interests at play, and I think this would be a good wake-up call for the global community to act on capital flows and money laundering. I'd make the same point about energy transitions. I'd make the same point about cybersecurity, and I'd make the same point about digital platform governance. Sunjoy mentioned how we were seeing fracturing in different kinds, and in this forum and others, I've made the point in the past, that in fact, data governance, while we may not see eye to eye currently, it is one of those Bretton Woods, San Francisco-type problems that is a global governance challenge. And we're only going to get at information and misinformation through that mechanism rather than sort of doing tit-for-tat information and misinformation wars. Second point, I'd underline what the German ambassador said at the outset, which is there's a longer-term governance and development agenda that we ignore at our peril. And climate change and pandemics are certainly part of that. One reason I think that we saw the kind of, some people would say disappointing vote in the UN, is that many countries are not convinced that there's something in it for them by signing on to the current global governance system. And so this brings me to my third set of observations on China. I guess I'd begin, as some of you have, that China and Russia are not the same. The Chinese development model, which can also be criticized, is actually for real. China has pulled out more people out of poverty in less time than any other country in history. And many developing countries see that. They did not see that in the model of the former Soviet Union, and they certainly don't see it in current Russia, where in fact, until recently and perhaps even now, life expectancy has been falling. And anthropometric measures of human well-being, like height and weight, have been going in the wrong directions. And so it is a mistake, although I get what all the security people say, to compare Russia and China, and therefore Ukraine and Taiwan. I see some similarities, but I think the underlying issues are much different, and you're dealing with a completely different set of historic and economic issues when it comes to China. China, you know, has its own set of grievances, some of which are legitimate. I'd go back to the failed, or I should say mishandled, reform of the IMF. The way in which most countries treated the creation of the AIB, the creation of the PPP as an anti-China bulwark, and then the elevation of anti-China rhetoric, which has become mainstream in many countries. And so I say that because China does have more of an interest in the global system than Russia does. China is more constructively plugged into globalization than Russia. And so I'll end on this point, that if you want to create a new international order, there's some specific things to which I mentioned at the outset. But I do think that, in this case, China is a linchpin in the sense that if we could tweak, in the medium run, some of the processes of globalization in a way that countries see the equation of belonging in it much more positively, and China's a very good example, then I don't think we'll quite see the fractionalization that we're seeing at present, which is worse, I mean, which actually the Chinas and Indias of the world kind of fall into a middle or Russian camp, when that's not what we want. Russia would be a lot more isolated if global governance processes moved in the right direction. And I think G20 and other four should get us there, perhaps not fast enough, but I don't see any other way around. Otherwise, we'll constantly be talking about battlefield scenarios and security scenarios. So I'll stop there.
Do we have Carlos online as well? Are you ready to speak?
Yes. Are you listening to me?
Yes, we hear you. We didn't before, but you're back.
Sorry about my previous microphone. I had to switch. Let me just say one thing. I heard many very intelligent comments from almost everyone. I only have to put one point. Suppose that Putin wins, then the world that we will have will be unstable. Suppose that Putin loses, then possibly he will fall, and we'll have an unstable world too. Suppose the war lasts for a long time, we'll have instability too. So I think that the fact that we are very much afraid of a clear outcome, which I, like most of you, I believe, will be a disastrous one. If there is no nuclear outcome, what can we do to ensure a path to recover stability? That is not being... That's not on the table. So there has to be some thinking about how do you bring stability back, being friend or no friends with Russia. I don't think that China has an interest in instability. China has a Taiwan problem, and that Taiwan problem is related to the one belt, one road. Without Taiwan, China doesn't control the South China Sea. Without the control of the South China Sea, the one belt, one road is incomplete. As long as the US has a foot there, from the Chinese point of view, they don't have a complete one-belt-one road. Because a one-belt-one road is not only economical, it's also geopolitical, it's also military. So there is an issue there for China. But China can wait. Russia probably can't. Russia GDP and demography are going down. The alliance between Russia and China is possibly a short-term one, as was mentioned. Russia would be a minor player if it accepted China's partnership. So both are questions that have to be on the table. George Keenan said that it was a big mistake to enlarge NATO. He wasn't hurt. He's the guy who designed containment. I think that nowadays, containment has to be restored some way, somehow. But not only does the West have to contain Russia, and maybe China too, but it also has to contain itself, has to recover time dominance. You cannot be pushed to decisions that you cannot make. So this is a time, and I think that President Biden is acting very correctly, is a time for restraint, self-restraint. This is a time for being very, very careful. No one wants a nuclear war in Europe, or that would escalate very easily to a world nuclear war. But on the other hand, imagine one thing. China is having problems with absorbing Hong Kong. Why? Because the Hong Kong mentality is different from the Chinese one. Hong Kong has lived under a British-style democracy for many decades. Imagine what would happen to Russia if they were successful. They would be absorbing 40 million Ukrainians that have lived under a democratic rule for 30 years. And the Ukrainians are showing that they love that democracy. They are dying for it. Imagine with a population of 140 million people, absorbing 40 million people more, that think differently. So there is a stability. It's not only a instability of war, it's not a one-step game. It's several steps that we have to look forward. So this is my opinion, and I repeat, I'm very sorry you couldn't hear when I first spoke, because you should have said this before. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's a lot of food for thought. I think every panelist, all panelists, had an opportunity to raise issues. We do have a little bit of time. Do we have a hand up? Mr. Joe Bo. Thank you. Thank you for staying. Thank you for staying, Dr. Joe. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kudo. Because of my military background, I wasn't so much concerned with international order. But now I'm really involved in it, because given China's position in the world now, you have to consider about this issue. Right now, I was very attentive to the remarks of Mr. Khanda Nani, and I agree with a lot, a lot of things you said. Because you see, basically, I believe this kind of dichotomy, dichotomy of separating the world into democracy versus autocracy is totally wrong. Because this actually would affect the Western democracies yourselves. Why? Because the Western democracies have been in class for 16 years. And why is that? You... I just read Freedom House. I cannot be convinced of why authoritarian states are so strong, so democracies have to be defined for 16 years. So something's wrong with the method, with the methodology. So this is what I saw. If you look just now, you separate the world into Cold War period and the post-Cold War period. I like that. But my way of looking at this is, just to think about this simply, how can the world order be liberal international order from 1945, when we have such major events that have shaped the world fundamentally, like the independence of 53 African countries, like the rivalry over Soviet-led Warsaw Bloc versus NATO, like the movement on non-alignment, like China's effective leadership in the Third World? So the world is, after 1945, is never liberal international order. Because there is only a short period, which is about 15 years or so, that looks best like a liberal international order, that is, after dissolution of the Soviet Union and before the full rise of China. Only that shorter period looks at the best like the liberal international order. Then, what is the success of China the last 40 years? It's not because of how able we are independently. It's just because we have learned from the West massively. Is this the success of hybridation? Because China during the Cultural Revolution have actually walked to the end of the tunnel. So once it turned back, then it's the right direction. The only question is, is how fast did it walk? So right now, China is so much integrated with the rest of the world. That is a good thing for everybody. But right now, we, in China, have a problem. We have been trying our best to be integrated to the world until Trump said, "Oh, this is great part of competition." So we're disappointed. So where shall we go? If you put yourself in China's shoes, where shall we go? So to conclude simply, I believe at any given time in history, the world is a combination of different culture, different civilization, different religions. There's no such things like a liberal international order. That is narcissism that will hurt yourself deeply, deeply. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This session has how many more minutes? We are already close to midnight, maybe in China likewise. We still have 25 minutes left, so let's continue to have discussions. So there are many points presented, and there are many possibilities of discussions, and it's also very interesting. The UN system, how do you look at the UN system? A lot of people have spoken about the UN Charter. For instance, sovereignty and also integrity of the territory, and also peaceful resolution of conflict, so a kind of a minimum kind of the concepts are being shared in order to sustain the international community. And I didn't have any coordination with Prime Minister Kishida, but then he used the word "the foundation," the very foundation of the international order, the very foundation of the international order, meaning that countries exist, and then they have to be all respected. But that very foundation is under attack right now. And this is something that is, that has to be protected by all means. But what are the means to protect that? And how can we form such means going forward? So looking back on the discussions, whether you are ally or not, and unless there is an alliance, you can't protect the country under attack? Does it mean that all countries need to belong to any kind of alliance? I wonder. I don't doubt it. And another thing is, when I think about states, what about the people there in those countries? Those citizens, they feel anger? Or they have a certain common empathy that they share, that is actually crossing the borders across the world? So there is a very important element, whether you can share it or not. That is the problem about the fact being shared by many people or not. That is a kind of a problem emerging out of this Ukrainian war. If the facts are being explained in a different way, or if the press of freedom is being controlled, what about the fact-check? If there is misinformation, people cannot make a correct judgment. And for that, we need to have a good democratic system in place, because that plays a very important role. So the disintegrating, the foundation of the international order, and in this division of the world, are we heading to the world where every country needs to belong to a kind of alliance? Or otherwise? Anybody would like to step in? Because that is our interest in Japan, and I think that is something to do with what Josh said. So we have remaining 20 minutes for that kind of discussion. Mr. Greco, please.
Yes, please. I'd like to make some comments, especially on a couple of fundamental points raised by Hans, which solicits me to make some reflection. I agree, of course, with you and the others that the West, Western countries, European countries, NATO countries are responsible for many mistakes. I would just remember that after the fall of the wall and the collapse of Soviet Union... and the collapse of Soviet Union, we appear to be aware that the Russia should not be humiliated. And there was a need in a way or another, at some point, to give Russia a say on security affairs in Europe. This led, I'm thinking, to the establishment of Russia NATO Council and also Russia's inclusion in the G seven, G eight. At the same time, the way which bought enlargements, but enlargements from NATO and then the the process of integrating other countries have been implemented was for many, for many respects, ill-conceived. Especially after, I think, if one look at the decision taken at Bucharest Summit, for instance, under the Bush administration, and the way in which the open-door policy was pursued. With this promise to integrate the country at a certain point, Ukraine, that we were not able to defend, and as we've seen, we are not, we, we are not declaring we will, we will defend. A second also, the eastern enlargement, the eastern enlargement and the the, the, the open door towards the Ukraine and on the part of the EU, and also Moldavia, Moldavia and others, and even Georgia, was also pursued without considering some implications. It was a policy driven mostly by such countries as Sweden and Poland, where a more balanced approach could have been more, more effective. That said, not just, just I would insist on one point. At this point in time, the problem is not the enlargement of NATO, not at all. The problem is at the moment the territorial integrity of Ukraine and the survival of its democratic government. So all talk about the, what we can do in postponing NATO enlargement or neutralize Ukraine is not now the key point. So don't make confusion in this regard. Second point, I would say that this Cold War order became increasingly post-Cold War order, getting increasingly problematic for three elements, for three factors. The worst was the fall of so, so, so big empire. See Soviet Empire. We know how that this always in the history is a, is a guide, always create big problems. And so we have to manage these, this fall and these implications, and we were, as I just said, not so skillful in doing that. The second is that the, now we have clearly a revisionist power, a revengeist power, Russia, and so we have the problem of contain this, this revisionist drive on the part of Russia, because it's become a factor, it's a big, a main factor. Namely, rising of China. Hans is right in saying we could, we should have taken into account the need to adjust the situation while, for instance, also as Houghton said, making more concession, relinquish more powers, in sense. But at the same time, of course, there is the sense that the, there is the need for some containment. So this is also another challenge. These are the three factors which are structural factors that put into question the stability of international order. Final point, I'm not so sure then the economic order is not at risk. I'm, in my view, it is a risk, especially because of the deepening technological competition and the way in which this is leading to more protectionist policies. And the, of course, we need to, the need or the, the choice, the desire to defend the strategic assets and, and also, this is the second point, but it's closely related. The fact that we see, we are seeing now that security problems are impacting very heavily on economic operations. I, I think Ukrainian crisis is a clear proof of that. Thanks.
Hi, domo arigatou gozaimashita.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Anderson from Singapore.
Thank you very much. I just want to make a couple of points. I think listening to the discussions throughout, I think there is a clear difference of several positions which, which I think underlies part of the problem facing, facing all of us today. I think on the, yes, the rules and regulations were made during the end of the Second World War. And therefore, it was very much a Western-oriented thing. But with decolonization and especially in the post-Cold War period, there you have a proliferation of states. There are now, I think, about hundred and ninety-three countries in the UN. And there wasn't even half that amount in nineteen forty-five. But I think one critical issue, and this is a point that's made by several people also, is that I think the West is mistaken, where they think that the entire world shares the same values that they do. In other words, that they think that there are universal values, but these are all defined by the Western liberal countries. But clearly now, when you have so many countries coming into the fore with different experiences, different cultures, different ways of seeing things, that other, there are other voices over there that wish to be heard. Now, the trouble is, if you take the attitude that you have universal values, then the, then the, the other position from that is that anyone that doesn't agree, subscribe to your values then should be opposed. Or should not have a say in how things should be done. And I think that is a problem because that creates the issue then that, you know, then you lead to a confrontational approach. But this I notice is also the, the traditional way that a lot of Western countries deal with things. In other words, even in the economic realm, you have a confrontational approach between management and workers. Whereas, a different sort of approach is the way that Sanjoy talked about. The Asian way is a bit different. We don't look in terms of forming alliances targeted against someone. We tend to look at regional security structures that bring everybody together to exchange views, to build up trust and confidences, to have that opportunity to discuss matters privately, whether it's a bilateral or trilateral way, but also within a bigger grouping to exchange views. It doesn't always work because like the EU, when you have too many members, then you have too many viewpoints and all that. But you have a situation whereby discussion, dialogue is the way to move forward. And this is very important because you have many, many voices to take into account. And in this sense, we should realize that it's not a question about totally rewriting the rulebook. Because it's not. We have a, a rulebook that is tried and trusted and actually very good to follow. The problem is that you don't follow them. It's like when you look into many countries and you say, okay, there's so much corruption there. What they need is all the rules and regulations to combat corruption. But if you look closely, they actually have those rules in place. It's a question of enforcement. And that is the problem with the world. There is the UN Charter which specifies what sort of behavior we want everyone to follow. And I stress the word, everyone. Big states, medium-sized states, small states. But when one, one or more people begin to think that they have, they are more equal than others, simply because either because they are stronger, because they are more powerful, or because they can flex their muscles and all, then the thing breaks down. It's not because that you don't have the rules there, it is because they are not being enforced. So that is why it is very clear why people oppose Russia's invasion. It's not about, oh, NATO was to blame because they caused all these things. And oh, yes, perhaps NATO expanded too fast or too much. But that doesn't justify the act of Russia invading a neighboring country or even carrying out acts to destabilize that country. So we, we should be clear about these sort of things. And we should be clear that if rules and regulations need changing because other people come in and they feel they should change, it should be done peacefully. And it should follow the sort of rules and regulations that are clearly spelt out already. They should recognize the sovereignty of countries, the political independence of countries, to be able to choose the sort of systems they want to run, the sort of people that they want to interact, but not to take policies where puts them or makes them a threat to their neighbors. And the question of territorial integrity is very important. Rules and regulations like this are there. But, you know, if you need to change certain things and all that, then it should be inclusive. So this idea about saying, trying to, to divide the world into two groups or push the Russians away because they don't subscribe to our values, no. I don't think so. They may not subscribe to the values, but they must subscribe to the idea because they are UN members, they should follow the UN Charter. That they also have a say in terms of changing rules and regulations, but in a peaceful manner. And this is crucial. Why? Because now, no matter how powerful you are, how strong you are, you cannot solve the problems of the world or your own problems. I'm talking here about transboundary issues, whether you talk about climate change or how are we going to find alternative supply chains? Or how do you address a global pandemic that will come and probably will be worse than COVID-19? How do you address these things if you don't sit down and talk to one another? And clearly, the very fact that, I think if you took a poll, most people would agree that if the, the handling of COVID-19 by all sides could have been done better if they were working together. So my point is that the rules and regulations are there, but they should be changed if necessary through peaceful means. And the assumption is that we are all different creatures. So we subscribe to certain values, yes, but do not assume that everybody thinks the same way. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. So we are running out of time. So anyone? If you could make a brief statement, please go ahead. Anyone? So let me say a few things. So I would like to ask once again to Mr. Linze. And about the future international order, how do you predict the international order will be in the future? Or are we going into the direction of more division in the future?
As always, Kudosan, you asked the big, tough question. And here I will invoke the wisdom of a famed American philosopher, Yogi Berra. It's really hard to make predictions, especially about the future. And I think that is particularly the case right now. The Russian invasion of Ukraine is a potential hinge point in history. I take Hans's point earlier about the there being a difference between the Cold War era and the post-Cold War order. We're on the cusp of potentially a new order. What that order is going to look like, I think, is to be determined. And it's going to be determined by the choices that major powers make. I'll just say specifically with Russia, given what is happening in Ukraine, given the courage, coverage that is given to it, it is hard to imagine how you bring Russia back in. I think this is a deep and bitter set of circumstances that is going to really color how Americans, how Europeans view issues. At the same time, you have the big issue of what are the choices that China is going to make? I take Rohinton's point that China has a lot at stake in the existing order. China, while it is not entirely happy with the existing, certainly, economic order, seems to have always had a preference for stability over a disjuncture. But again, the Chinese have made a decision to side with the Russians, and that has created an instability. And will China continue down that road in which it continues the strategic partnership without limits? With Russia? If that happens, then I think it is going to be very difficult to find a way to patch the existing order back up. Likewise, the choices the United States is going to make. And again, you have the issue here. I think it's been alluded to several times now. Obviously, since the advent of Donald Trump, the consensus in the United States is about the issue of great power competition. This is clearly going to play into it. Now, I think the Biden administration with meetings such as the one that Jake Sullivan, the National Security Advisor, is either currently having or about to have, I believe, in Rome with his Chinese counterpart, shows that the Biden administration would very much hope to find a way to persuade China not to follow Russia down the path it is on. There's nothing, however, to indicate that China is rethinking the choices it has made. And throughout the conversation here today, there's been a lot of suggestions and a lot of assumptions that diplomacy and negotiation are valuable, that you need to see the world through the eyes of others that may not see it exactly the same way. Unfortunately, not all tasks can be solved by negotiation. Differing opinions don't have to come to agreement. There can be a fundamental break on that score. And it is lamentable, as several people have pointed out, that we're going to, or we run the risk of a broken world order at precisely the time when global cooperation is needed to address a number of transnational threats, most notably global climate change, but also pandemic and a variety of other issues. And I think that this current order has been shaken, and it's not at all clear to me it's going to be put back together quickly or anytime soon. And again, you know, I'll end where I began in my comments this morning. There's a lot of talks, certainly in the United States, certainly in Europe, about how remarkable it is that these countries have come together in a working shoulder-to-shoulder, in a consensus-based fashion on what to do, and that unity is impressive. But the fact, again, that you are unified at the start of a crisis does not mean that you will be unified two, three, four, five, six years down the road. So I think this is, again, a pivot point or a hinge point in world history. And where we go is going to be decided by the choices that the leaders of key countries make. I wish I could say I'm optimistic they would choose wisely. But history has taught me that wisdom often escapes world leaders to the extent even when they wish to choose differently, they feel confronted or constrained by their domestic politics and expectations placed upon them.
Thank you very much for your very excellent summary of discussions, I believe. But the, and one thing to Mr. Linze. So the to Rohinton, so the do you think that the, now the, we are now moving into creating a stability strategy, is a strategy, stability between the US and China? Mr. Linze, yes.
So could you just rephrase it? Repeat the last part of the question?
So the strategic stability, because when we had the discussion of the Chinese counterparts, we did touch upon that. So between China and the US, strategic stability and the efforts, conversations needed for that, and that would be very important. And that's what we heard from some quarters. But yeah, because we now have this Russian question, so the discussion now is starting between China and the US on Russian issue. So the, is that part of the trial efforts in order to build the stability, strategic terms, a straight stability between the US and China?
Well, I would put it this way, kudos on. The Biden administration understands that China is a great power, that it has considerable influence over the evolution of the world order. However, the United States also believes, and I think this is, again, a fairly broadly held view, that the United States needs to contest certain choices that the Chinese government wishes to make, that it has many like-minded countries in Asia, but not only in Asia, who are, who share that point of view. And the Biden administration is hoping to provide or present a united front while also looking for ways to offer China some of what it wants. Again, you know, to get something, you have to give something. I don't think that fundamental rule of politics or of human nature is lost on anybody in the Biden administration. And again, I think the actions of the Biden team over the last month or so in trying to communicate to Russia by speaking directly to China speaks to that fundamental recognition on the part of the United States government that you need to deal with China. This is not going back to 1954 and refusing to shake hands with Chinese officials at international conferences and the like. Having said that, the choices China makes also matter. China has agency. China gets to choose. China has to decide what it wants. Chinese officials have to decide what they're willing to give up. And I will simply say that if the Chinese government sticks on the path it is currently on, in which it is going to back Vladimir Putin's war in Ukraine, then I think it is going to be very hard to find the common ground between Washington and Beijing. I think it's going to be very hard, even though I agree with Hans, to find ways to reform the existing order because lines will be drawn in the sand. Because there are certain principles that, for the United States, and I don't think just for the United States, are non-negotiable. And that at some point, you have to stop, choose, and make a stand. And I think we are in one such moment. Now, my hope is we will have smart diplomacy that will be able to keep this all contained. But again, this is also a very risky moment, as I alluded to earlier, just with the challenge of Russian military strikes right near the border with Poland. It is either through design or miscalculation, human error, we could end up going down a very different path than anybody, including the leaders in those capitals, wish to travel. It's a very dangerous time.
Thank you very much. So we have to wrap up. But we have two people who have raised their hand. So please be very brief. First of all, from Chatham House, Mr. Kundanani, and as well as Mr. Cho. Okay, so first with the Mr. Kundanani, and then followed by Mr. Cho. Please be brief.
Thank you, Kudo-san. I'll try to be. I wish we did have more time because this is getting quite interesting now. And I wanted to, James, if I could just push you a little bit further on this question of the American agency and the choices the United States faces. Because, you know, you're absolutely right, China faces choices too, Russia does as well. But it seems to me the US does too. And in a way, I think what you said, you know, if, I'm paraphrasing, but you know, it felt to me as if you were saying the US is being pulled in these two different directions, which is very much how I see it. And I think it corresponds with, in a way, the, some of the fault lines and tensions in this concept of liberal international order that I was talking about. So it does seem to me as if there is a choice, which I wonder if now is becoming starker than it was before, between a sort of realist US foreign policy approach, you know, in support of a kind of a realist order, which would prioritize stability, and on the other hand, a sort of idealist or a liberal kind of approach that would, you know, deprioritize stability in a way and prioritize values or ideology. And I can think of, you know, even individuals in the Biden administration who I would kind of associate with either of those two kind of pulls. And I suppose my question is, in a way, you know, whether the US is going to be, you know, whether we'll just continue to try and balance those two tendencies, the idealist and the realist, whether it will be sort of forced to make a choice. And I think where it all kind of comes together is what you hinted at, which is, you know, I've been wondering about this since the Biden administration came to power. How can you do, you know, cooperation with China on climate change at the same time as you're doing what Biden calls extreme competition with China? And so, you know, as I say, you know, will the US be forced to choose here, or am I misreading that?
Kudo-san, you want me to respond? You're trying to bring it to a close.
Yes, please. Yes. Yes, Mr. Linze, yes, please.
I'll do this very quickly because it's a big question, as you know, Hans. I don't like the terms realism and idealism. I don't think they're very helpful for any of this. The reality is, is in life, you often have trade-offs. You want a variety of things, and you can't get them all at an acceptable price. So you're going to have to make choices. And I think that is going to be the issue for the Biden team going on. Now, while I think they have done a very good job in handling the lead-up to Ukraine and the follow Russian invasion, that doesn't mean they will continue to make wise choices. It also doesn't mean that all the other foreign policy choices or lack of choices they have made have been particularly good. We didn't get a chance to discuss what you meant by reform of the liberal order, but there are obviously a number of problems in the economic realm, Rohinton knows this quite well, where a Biden administration might have been able to work with like-minded allies to do some very smart things. Instead, they have sort of tangled themselves up in a slogan called "A Foreign Policy for Middle Class", the content of which I have no idea what it means. But in essence, there's just been more drift rather than bold action that would, I think, actually diminish differences and irritations with other countries, including our allies, but not just with our allies, and would also serve America's own interests. But we're not here yet, and we may not get there. Leaving this last point, again, we talk about order, we're talking about decisions countries make. But, you know, at least here in the United States, you have elections, leaders change. Different leaders will make very different choices. Just listen to the speech that former President Donald Trump gave in South Carolina over the weekend. So if you were to see Donald Trump return to the Oval Office or someone like Trump in January of 2025, you're going to go down a very different path of history.
So, Mr. Cho?
Yeah.
So, ending with Mr. Cho, perhaps?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Kudo. Because you just now mentioned about the strategic stability between China and the US, so I feel obliged to say a few words on this issue. Strategic stability, narrowly speaking, means about the balance between nuclear weapons. And broadly speaking, means how to avoid a arms race. So if we talk about the balance of nuclear weapons, China, China's nuclear weapon cannot balance that with the United States. So the only way out is either for China to drastically increase its nuclear weapon to reach a level of the United States, or the United States reduce its nuclear weapon to the level of China. None of this is possible. So the only way out, I believe currently, that is a very realistic, good way out, is we talk about no first use of nuclear weapons, especially given that Mr. Putin threatened to use nuclear weapons. So now we could talk about no first use of nuclear weapon. And that is very much relevant to Mr. Biden's policy because he actually has mentioned about nuclear weapons used is primarily deterrence. So his policy is most is very close to China's no-first use of nuclear weapon. And that is understood because he was siding with President Obama's free world. The only worry is the worries from allies. Allies were afraid that in this way, the United States would give up the nuclear weapon, nuclear analysts. So why should the allies worry? Because one attack, one ally is an attack on all countries. But this is not possible. And then, how about DPRK? Then, because the whole Kremlin is not a very big. So if DPRK use nuclear weapons, that's committing suicide. That means they cannot use it. So let me stop here. So I finally made the proposal.
We did have a Chinese panelist wrap up the session. I don't know how the discussion evolved this way. I really appreciate that Mr. Cho stayed until the very end despite the theme of this session. The crux of the international order or the foundation of the international order may be collapsing. I do feel that is evolving. And together with the action in Ukraine, this is a phenomenon that is ongoing. I don't think anyone would appreciate the collapse of an international order. And so, which leads to unprecedented sanctions coming out because of the Ukrainian crisis, may not be, may not be sustainable. But I do believe that we all need to take this matter seriously. So at the minimum, there has to be rules of, minimum rules of coexistence as part of the international order. And this can be developed in many directions, not to impose Western, purely Western ideals, but also to engender diversity as well. What I would like to see is peace. And in other words, conflict resolution through peaceful means, respect for territory, therefore, no aggression or no unilateral dominance of another territory. Standards set of rules to that end must be laid out. Otherwise, the current order is so fragile, it could break any minute. The Tokyo Conference this year coincided with so many changes. And in the past, it's been so as well, but that perspective remains unchanged. Japan is an ally of the United States, but very close neighbor of China. We engage in active dialogue with China as well. And going forward, we would like to engage in, engage with a European colleagues in a dialogue session. Hopefully, next year as well. And there are limits, obviously, to the online format. So we need to meet and talk and dine as well, all together. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your kind attention. It's been four hours. Thank you for working with us for so long, engaging with us for so long. Our deepest appreciation to the representatives of think tanks from ten countries. And thank you to the Chinese panelists for staying with us till the end. This is the fifth Tokyo Conference 2022. We had several hundred viewers, by the way, joining in this webinar. And some of the panelists will join us again tomorrow and the day after tomorrow. Tomorrow and day after tomorrow, the focus would be on the global economy. International order destabilizing, a fluid globalization, its future and policy coordination. A topic to address over two days, starting at 7:00 PM Japan time. And to those panelists who attended, we welcome once again tomorrow, Mr. Joshi from India, ORF, who will be the emcee. Session two, we welcome Mr. Greco from Italy as the moderator as well. On the 16th day, day after tomorrow, the last session, we're happy to welcome Mr. Carlos Ivaliala in session four. We look forward to seeing you again tomorrow and day after tomorrow. We have 400 observers. Please make sure that your web connections are stable. And also, please recheck your microphone, test your microphone ahead of time. I would like to, we would like to ask Carlos to stay behind after the session so we can test your equipment together, if you don't mind. And with that note, the Tokyo Conference 2022 comes to a close. And next year, we hope that it's in real Tokyo that the conference would be held. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you so much.